Hi, my name is Monica Duarte and I am an archetypes and IFS inform coach. And today I'm here with my client Mari Lu, who has graciously volunteered to do a little demo so that you can see what it's like to do sessions with me. And again, with the sessions, I include IFS, which is Internal Family Systems, and also I work with archetypes. So Mari Lu and I have been working together for a few months now. And I just thought about an idea of doing a demo and she volunteered. And I'm really excited to be working with her today. And Mari Lu, so I just want you to know that please feel free to share whatever feels comfortable for you and whatever doesn't feel comfortable, you can keep to yourself because I know this work is really personal and I want to respect that. And again, I'm really thankful that you are here. So are you okay with that?
Yes. Hi. I'm excited to do this, how we can call it, journey with Monica Duarte. And like she said, I've been working with her for a couple of months. And it was something that I need to do for myself. Since I was very young, I have a lot of internal problems that I need to fix for myself, for my body, for my spirit. And I'm excited to do this and I'm just healing myself. And I'm just thankful for Monica to help me to do this. So I hope you guys see what she's been helping me to heal and be a better person than who I am. And I can see it already that it's been changing myself. Yes, myself. I don't have to change anybody. I just need to change myself. And I hope everybody can try this and see what it can help you, like completely help you to be a better person to yourself because it's very important to heal yourself for trials must that we never tell we have until you start experience and learning this journey. So I hope you guys like it and judge is okay. I don't care, to be honest. But that's who I am. So thank you for your time.
Wonderful. So the way that today's going to work out, we're gonna, the way that I like to do sessions with my clients and Mari Lu has experienced this too, is I like to start off with archetypes. So if you, when you have a session with me, I'll find, I'll find out what your top archetypes are and we'll start connecting with your strongest ones. And the reason I like to do that is because it, archetypes are one of the easiest parts that you can connect with, especially if they're really strong, they're really easy to access. So you can actually start to kind of, if you have never done inner work before, this is like a really good taste of what's in there and it's easy to access. These archetypes are really easy to access. So what we're gonna do today is we're gonna connect with Mari Lu's creator archetype. So I'm gonna guide her. This is gonna be, this type of process is more called direct access. So that means that I'm gonna be directly speaking to her creator archetype. And she's just gonna allow that archetype to speak through her. And I'm gonna ask it some questions. And then after that, we're gonna incorporate more of the IFS component to this, which basically we're gonna focus on a part that's lighting up for her. And again, the idea of IFS is that we were all made out of different parts that live in our system internally, just like, you know, the world is filled with people. Our inner worlds are also filled with parts or beings or people. And they're real and they're really active. And if you can start to learn how to access them and to connect with them, you can, you can access healing. And one of the ways you do that is by learning how to connect to the self. And the self is that being in us, that since I'm a spiritual coach, is connected with God. It's that being in us that can never be broken, it can never be harmed, it can never be injured. And when you can access and connect to your parts from that space, that's when healing happens. And so my job as a coach is not just about helping you to connect with your parts and to know who they are and how to, you know, how to understand them. But it's also to help you mainly, to help you connect with the energy of self. Because the more that you do that, the more that you can heal. And when I'm doing this, I'm also connecting to the energy of self. Because if I have a client that is not familiar with the energy of self, I have to be able to hold that energy for them so that they can feel safe to connect to their inner world. So that's what we're gonna do today and I'm really excited to get started. And the way that I like to start, I like to do a little meditation or kind of like a little journey here. And I'm also excited for Mari Lu's kitty that's here to hold space with us. I love her.
She wanna be part of this.
So okay, so Mari Lu, so let's go ahead and close your eyes and I'll close my eyes too. And just take a few deep breaths. Now go ahead and count it this time, just so people can kind of see what this, you know, journey kind of looks like. So breathe in for one, two, three, four. Breathe out for one, two, three, four. Breathe in for one, two, three, four. Breathe out for one, two, three, four. One last time, breathe in for one, two, three, four. Breathe out for one, two, three, four. Now Mari Lu, what I'd like you to do is I'd like you to just get grounded into your body, all the parts that are thinking about, you know, other things that you need to do, things for tomorrow, for later. Just call them back into your body. And just allow yourself to just feel grounded in your body and safe. Just connect to that self energy and just come back to yourself. And what I'd like you to do now is I'd like you to imagine a cord at the base of your spine and connect that cord to the center of the earth. You can make that cord any color you like. And also you can add anything onto it. You can add, if you want to add sparkles or flowers, whatever you like. Make it as playful as you like. And then go ahead and just make that cord the width of your hips so that you feel very supported by the earth, very grounded and safe in your body. And while you keep your eyes closed, Mari Lu, I'd like you to look around and find your creator archetype. And again, the creator archetype's main purpose is to help us or to help you be authentic with yourself, to show up in the world from an authentic place, to help you see the visions for yourself in your life and help you ground that into the earth, to the planet, to see your vision for your life and to help you show up in a way on the planet and in your life that feels honest and authentic with yourself. And like helping you to let go of any false self, anything that's not true to you. So as you do that, go ahead and find that archetype in or around your body and let me know when you've connected with it, okay? And you'll know that there's, the archetype is there if you see any images, any colors, any sounds, any sensations. Is anything showing up for you?
I see. Yellow color.
Yellow?
And I see like a black screen. I'm having like a little hard time.
Okay.
To connect right now.
Okay. So it sounds like there's a part there that's not allowing you to look at that creator.
Correct.
Can you ask that part to give you space? To just soften back? And if it has any concerns of you connecting with the archetype, it can also let you know.
I feel this bright purple color in my right eye.
Can you get closer to it? Can you get closer to that color? Just remember to access that self energy that we've been working with. And just send it that energy too.
I think, I feel like it's there. It's so bright.
Okay.
Purple and yellow color. I feel it like
Beautiful.
Top of my brain.
Nice.
That's the colors.
What else do you notice about it?
Very calm.
Beautiful.
More energy.
Energy. How are you feeling towards it, Mari Lu?
Calm.
Nice. Can you get closer to the archetype and ask it if it's okay if we can ask it some questions? If I could ask it some questions directly? And just let her know, we're just curious to get to know it better. We're not gonna fix anything. We're not gonna do anything. We just want to get to know it better.
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay.
You can ask me questions.
Beautiful. So I'm speaking directly with Mari Lu's creator archetype. Is it okay if I can ask you some questions to get to know you better?
Yes.
Beautiful.
Welcome.
What is it that you seek from Mari Lu at this time in her life?
To be her inspiration. Her support.
Anything else? Kindness?
Brightness.
Brightness?
Yeah.
Beautiful. And what is it that you desire from her at this time?
More independent than she is already.
You want her to be more independent?
Yes.
Can you tell us more about that?
Free.
Is there anything else you can tell us about that for her to understand?
I see a bridge. And I see some clear water. And I see this beautiful bright yellow color again, which is him, the archetype.
The creator archetype?
Yeah.
Beautiful. Is there anything else you'd like to share with Mari Lu in regards to her feeling free? Or her being more free?
Will be a lot of changes.
So a lot of changes are coming for her in her life?
They are already coming.
Mm-hmm.
They're already here.
Beautiful.
Big steps.
What are some of those steps if you'd like to share?
I feel like my heart is kind of scared.
Okay.
I guess that's me and it's telling me that not to be scared.
So it sounds like there's another part there that's scared.
Yeah.
Can you just let that part know that we're being really gentle, we're not gonna do anything your system doesn't want to do? And ask it if it can soften back just a little bit, okay? And if it has any concerns, it can let us know too. We can work with it.
It's a little girl.
Ask the little girl if she would like us to work with her after we're done working or connecting with this archetype?
Yes.
Okay, beautiful.
She's sitting on a lollipop.
Wonderful. Can you just let her know that we'll get back to her after we're done connecting with the creator archetype? Is she okay waiting just for a little bit?
Okay.
Beautiful.
She's walking.
All right. Can you connect back with the creator archetype? We just have one last question.
He's here.
Beautiful. Okay, so my last question for you is what is it that you need or you would like Mari Lu to do in order to create this freedom and independence?
Even that she's scared, she have to do it.
Can you tell us more about what she can do to help her alleviate the feeling of being scared? So she can move forward?
Do it even if you're scared.
Would it would help her to connect with the warrior archetype so that she can tap into her courageous energy even if she's scared?
That will help. When she can do it too.
Okay. And while working with this, the part that showed up, that scared, help her as well, working with her?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Is there anything else you'd like her to know at this time? About you or anything that's important for her to know?
That I love her and she'll be great.
Wonderful. Would you like to be able to connect with Mari Lu more often, like she did today?
I'm always connecting with her.
Okay. Would you like her to be able to connect with you more consciously?
Yes.
Beautiful. Is there a signal that you can send to her that she'll know it's you? It could be a feeling, an image, a sensation, a sound?
Playtime. When she think about playing time, that's when
That's you.
I'm connecting with her.
Awesome, beautiful. Thank you so much for showing up. I'm so honored to be able to be witness to you and for you to be connecting. Is it okay if I can speak with Mari Lu now?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mari Lu, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Beautiful. So did you hear how your archetype would like, creator archetype would like to connect with you more? And he sent you a signal now?
Yes.
And are you open and willing to doing that, connecting with your archetype?
Yes.
Can you let him know?
He already knows.
Good. And then can you thank him too for allowing us to connect with him and for showing himself to you? Because now you know what he looks like and the energy he feels like and how to connect with him. So you guys can work together. Instead of him just, you know, working on his own, you can work together now in your life.
She's so full of energy.
That's awesome. So go ahead and thank him. And then when you're ready, you can open your eyes, okay? Just slowly open your eyes. And just come back to this earth. How is that?
I'm so calm.
That's awesome. That means you're accessing a lot of self energy. So calmness is, remember calmness is one of the qualities of the self. So that's beautiful.
Yeah. He is super energetic and very calm. I only feel that the colors, you know, I don't see him, like I see a different part to me. But this one is just the color and it's super powerful, like beautiful.
That's awesome.
Yeah, I feel so bright.
And lively.
Yeah, like my eyes, my right eye was like, kind of like crying because there was so much light coming.
Wow.
Yeah.
And you know, one of the things with the creator archetype, like, because I do branding too. And so a lot of companies that have a strong creator archetype have really bright colors. So that's really interesting that he showed up like that because it's like, it makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
So now you have, you're able to access this archetype, you know how to access it. So you can start working with it consciously. And one of the things that I've learned with archetypes is that they do have self energy if they're accessed correctly. They have self energy. So that makes sense why, when you connected with it, it was feeling calm because it did have that self energy already.
Yeah, and right now I feel kind of like warm, which is strange. Like right now I can feel me like kind of warm, like my arms especially. So that's interesting too.
Yeah, you're probably processing energy, like you're moving energy around right now, which is a good thing. That's a good sign. Beautiful. So I love it how we did this and then the part that wanted to work with us today showed up in that. So now we know who to work with.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
I'll be working more with I'll be working more with the part.
So let's go ahead and go back into your inner world, um, and let's work with that little girl that showed up that, uh, we asked if it was okay to work with her later. The one that was scared.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I'd like you to do is, uh, just go back internally and just look for her and scan for her wherever she is in or around your body. Okay, and just let me know when you've found that connection.
I can feel it, but I don't see her yet.
Okay.
But I can feel her.
Where do you feel her in or around your body?
In my heart, like it's, it's like scared.
Hmm, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So when you're, when you say it feels scared, is that coming from her or is it coming from a different part?
It's from her.
Okay. Can you, um, go ahead and just send her that self-energy? Remember those qualities of the self are courageous, calmness, compassionate, connectedness. Creativity is another one, creative. Just to name a few. And just let her know, we're just curious to get to know her better. We don't have to do anything she doesn't want to do, she's in charge here, okay?
Yes.
How are you feeling towards her, Marilu?
I feel happy.
Okay. And can you look around, just scan around and see if there are any other parts that may be concerned with us working with her, okay? Or connecting with her. And you'll notice if there's another part, if you have any other thoughts, any other feelings, sensations, or any other colors show up too. You wanna get permission from all the protectors that may be protecting this beautiful little girl.
I see. Kinda gray color. Hard to see it.
Does that gray color feel like it's coming from the little girl or is it coming from another part?
Isn't that a part?
Okay. Can you ask that part if it can soften back? Just let it know, we're just curious to get to know this little girl. We don't, we're not gonna do anything it doesn't want us to do. And if it'd like, it can, um, also watch us, but it does need to give you space so that we can be able to help this little girl. And if it has any concerns too, it can let us know and we'll work with it, okay?
This color moved to the sky. And now it blend with the sky. So now the sky is kinda gray and blue at the same time. It's calm.
It feels calm?
Yeah, it's really calm.
Okay.
Feeling.
Alright. So ask that, ask that protector if it's okay with us moving forward with working with this little girl. Or if it needs us to work with it first.
Yes, be kind.
Beautiful. Let him know or it know that we will be kind. We'll be very respectful, we'll not do anything that it itself does not want us to do or the little girl does not want us to do, okay?
Okay.
And then also ask him if he's seen the work that we've done with the other parts that you've rescued, that you've helped.
Yes, I see that.
Okay.
And this cloud turn into eagle.
Beautiful.
She's looking at me right now. I'm watching you.
Let him know that he can watch us as much as he like, that it's completely safe and, um, if he can just give us space so that we can work with this little girl, okay?
Okay. Thank you for working with her.
Can you ask him if he's given us the green light? To move forward?
Yes.
Okay.
I see yellow and purple, that means we dead.
Oh, beautiful. That's so beautiful, okay. Thank that part for showing itself and for allowing us to work with this beautiful little girl. And then when you're ready, Marilu, go ahead and start approaching this little girl, just go gently and, and while you're sending that self-energy of calmness, compassion, clarity, even like creative.
I see her.
Beautiful.
She is buying some candy. She's really independent.
What else do you notice about her?
She had this white dress. Beautiful black eyes. Black shoes. She's just eating her candy. She say hi, how are you? I'm losing myself to her.
Beautiful. So you're letting, are you, can you let her know who you are and how old you are?
Yes.
Okay.
She is five years old.
She's five years old?
Yeah.
Does she know how old you are?
Yes.
Like in your physical form, Marilu? Okay. How are you feeling towards her right now?
Happy.
Okay.
And calm.
Beautiful, calmness, again, it's another quality of the self, so you're accessing that energy while you're connecting with her right now. Go ahead and ask her in your own words, um, to tell you more about her story. What is her life, what, what has her life been like and what role is she planning or system? And remember, she's five years old, so she may communicate differently than adults do, so just be open to receiving the way she communicates, okay?
I'm here.
You wanna ask her, um, to tell you more about her? About her life? It sounded like she was scared earlier, can she tell you more about that? We were talking with the Creator archetype and, um, he said that you, he wanted you to be more independent and more free and this little girl got scared. Can, can she tell you more about that? Can you ask her?
I'm here to. Long from you. To be strong.
Be strong? Now, Marilu, it sounds like, uh, your part is blending in a lot with you. Can you just ask her for a little bit, to just soften back a little bit so you can speak directly to her? Can you still see her?
Yeah.
Okay, beautiful. Why don't you let her communicate to you and then you can tell me what you feel comfortable sharing with me, okay? Because I wanna focus the session on you connecting with her instead of her speaking directly to me, okay?
Okay.
Okay. So ask her if that's okay?
Yes.
Okay, good.
She's telling me that she wanna be like me. But she's scared. And she want me to teach her to be strong. Even when I'm scared.
Is that something you can, you can teach her?
Yes.
Can you let her know?
She already knows right now.
Okay. Can you, um, ask her just to share more about her life with you? Is there anything that she would like to embody or anything like that? Or she just wants you to get to know her better?
You are my inspiration.
Does that make sense, Marilu, for you?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
It's okay, you allow whatever needs to come out to come out, okay? You're safe. Can I share what I'm picking up and you can just confirm if it's right or not?
Yep.
It sounds like there's a five, uh, year old little girl in there who has been looking for somebody to, uh, inspire her and to be strong. And now that you are the age that you are, she's looking up to you for that, does that sound correct or?
Yeah, it's an honor for me to know that her is looking at me, you know, as a strong person, so I'm thanking her for thinking on me and I hope I can help her to be wherever she wanna be.
Yeah. It sounds like this little girl, um, was, came into your system or was created when you were five years old.
Now it's coming, it's beautiful night.
Yeah.
I feel so warm.
And it sounds like she has been looking for inspiration, for, uh, somebody to look up to for all these years, does that make sense or does it feel right or not?
Yeah.
Can you let her know that you didn't exist at that time, that you're here now? As, you know, whatever age you are, you're here now. And that she doesn't have to be alone anymore, that you can work together and together you will inspire each other and be courageous to do what feels right for you guys, even if it's scary. That you're both here now, and say it in your own words, okay? And you can also even let her know in your own words that you've been working with to understand yourself better, to get to know yourself more, to connect with all, of, of your inner world, your inner parts. You've been able to help some, a, a lot of them actually heal. Um, and you would like to offer that to her as well if she's open to it. And if you're open to it too.
She know that. And she's hugging me.
Aww. Can you give her a hug back too?
Yeah.
And just keep sending her that self-energy.
I just feel so hot.
That's completely normal, you're processing a lot right now. And energy is moving internally for you. And energy is moving internally for you.
And I see this light coming from the sky. And we are high in and I can feel that energy going down into us. This white light.
That sounds like self-energy. Does it feel that way?
Yeah.
Beautiful. Allow that energy to come into both of you, okay?
Yeah.
And remember, the self is that being in us that's connected to God, to our Creator, to whatever it is that we believe in, that's bigger than us.
And turn to yellow.
Sounds like the Creator.
Yes.
Beautiful. Now go ahead and ask that beautiful little girl if she has anything she'd like to unburden, because we can do that if she likes.
No. She's scared. She's gonna work on beating this scare feeling.
Okay.
So she can learn not to be scared. And even if she's scared, she's gonna do it.
Okay, wonderful. Ask her if she'd like to move to a new place. She'd like to move where all your other healed parts are? Or she would like to be where she's at?
She already moved.
She moved already?
City. Yeah, she moved like in a city.
Does she feel safe there?
It's a lot of people in there, like. I've never been in New York, but it feels like it's New York. So many people around her and I'm with her.
Okay. Can you ask her if she feels safe there? And if that's where she'd like to live? Or she's just visiting for right now?
I'm just visiting.
Okay. Ask her, when she's not visiting there, where would she like to live? Where would she like to? You can let her know about the place that you created where all your other healed parts lived and offer her that there. That place is safe and it's, it has a lot of self-energy there too.
I'm explaining to her
Okay.
about the special place for all my healing.
You can let her know too, she can, she can visit the city if she wants. But we just want to make sure we know where she's gonna live, okay? So you know where, how to access her or where to access her.
Yeah, she's just gonna stay in there and visit and explore.
Okay.
I feel confident that she'll be fine.
In the city?
Yeah.
Okay, beautiful. Beautiful. Wonderful. So ask her if she would like to continue to connect with you the way that you did today.
Yeah.
And would you like that too, Marilu?
Yes.
Okay. Can you ask her if she can send you a signal that'll let you know it's her? It could be again, an image, a sensation, a feeling, a sound, a color. Anything's possible.
Me and her holding hands, that's what I need to think about her.
Okay. So when you see that image, that you'll know that that's her wanting to connect with you, correct?
Correct.
Can you let her know that? Just confirm that with her?
Yes.
And just let her know that you'll be connecting with her at least two to three times a week for the next two to three weeks and moving forward however long she needs it for. If you are open and willing to do that.
And everything turned purple.
And go, go ahead and also validate what she's shared with you, okay? Because it's really important that we validate our parts so that they know that we heard them. That you can hear what they said to you.
She's giving me a hug. She cracked my neck. She's hugging me.
She cracked your neck?
Hugging.
Sorry. I was like, what? Okay.
Have a little backpack.
Just remember to let her know that she doesn't have to go on this journey by herself. That you're right here, okay?
Yeah.
You're right here and you guys can go through this journey together. She's only five years old. It's kind of a big thing to let a five-year-old wander around the city by herself. So you're right here with her.
She's asking me if I can be her mom. Yeah.
That's beautiful. You want to tell her that? And go ahead and ask her too, if there's anything else that she needs from you right now, okay? Before we end our session.
Let me some angels.
Can you send her those to her?
Yeah.
And just also let her know, we'll be checking in with her. Next time we have our session, our regular session, we'll be checking in with her to see how she's doing and if she needs anything else, okay?
Okay.
And also thank her for, for showing herself. And so you're both in agreement to check in for the next two to three weeks, two to three times a week?
Yes.
Okay, beautiful. It's really important that when you make agreements with your parts, you follow through because this is how your system begins to trust you again. And that's basically what self-trust is, okay?
Yes.
Beautiful. And go ahead and thank her for showing herself and allowing her to, allowing us to witness her and to be here for her. And then also that protector that showed up earlier, the one that was showing up as gray.
Yeah. That eagle.
The eagle, yeah. And then before you part ways, or not part ways, but before you come back to the earth, go ahead and check in with the protector, Marilu. And just make sure, let's just check to see if he needs anything else. If he saw what we did and how he feels about it, okay? What he thinks about it. Because we don't want to leave any loose ends.
He saw what we did and asked him to protect the little girl from wherever she's at, like in that area. And he put her in this yellow bubble. And this outside is to this beautiful angels with these beautiful winds. Outside of that bubble. So they're walking with her.
And how does he feel about the work that we did?
Is it great?
Beautiful. Go ahead and take in that validation, Marilu, for yourself, okay? Because you did a lot of good work today. And thank that protector, that eagle for, for showing itself and keeping your beautiful little girl safe. And then you can even ask it if there's anything else it needs from you right now, okay? And if not, then we can, we can end.
Okay, I'll say goodbye and thank you for everything. You don't need anything from me.
Good.
Today.
Beautiful. All right, Marilu, when you're ready, you can open your eyes, okay?
Sorry, I'm full of tears.
You're good. That's normal when we do this work, so.
Yeah.
You did really good. We never know what's gonna happen when we do these because it's like, you know, your inner world's kind of in charge.
Yeah. Can we leave she wanna be there?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Can we leave she wanna be in that area?
The city.
Yeah, she's so little.
Well, she probably feels confident because you're there with her.
Yeah.
And she may just want to be there for a little bit and then, you know, move. She probably just wants to explore. You can ask her when you connect with her.
Oh, well.
Continue, you know, just asking her questions, giving her that self-energy.
Oh, well.
Yeah. How are you feeling?
I feel kind of blind, so much positive energy.
You feel blind?
Yeah, like, like so much brightness. And I feel so warm. Yeah, energy.
Yeah, that was a lot. It sounds like this archetype was really important for you, actually. Yeah.
Like all my body is warm, like I feel so warm. So it feels good. I feel kind of like full of energy. Yeah.
Good.
Feel good.
Good.
Thank you for help me to connect with this archetype. It's beautiful. So thank you.
It's my pleasure. And you see how like the archetype, there's the archetype and then there's parts connected to the archetypes?
Yeah.
And sometimes there's parts that are connected to the archetypes, but they could be like an exile, like meaning like they're not really integrated into our system. So this work help us, helps us to integrate them. So now, well, you experienced it when you've integrated them back into your system. You start to feel different.
Yes.
And that's when you start to realize like this work is real because if it was just make believe, you wouldn't be feeling different afterwards, you know?
Yeah.
Beautiful.
So full of energy right now, so.
Good.
I'm gonna start doing stuff.
That's awesome. I'm so excited. So when we connect next week, or this coming week, we'll check in with her and see how she's doing.
Yeah.
And so your homework again is to connect with her two to three times a week and also with the Creator archetype. Okay, that's, that's gonna be really important for you to integrate those two together. And if there's any unburdening, we can do that next week.
Okay. Yeah, now she's not ready.
Yeah, no, I was picking up that she may have some because the fact that she is five years old and didn't really have a role model, like there could be something there. But we have to respect the system and not like push our agenda to what we want it to do. We have to respect what it wants to do.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, Marilu, just while, while we end, what's your, what has your experience been like? Like when you started doing this work with me to now? Like what has been like, how did you feel in the beginning to how do you feel now? Just because I'm curious.
When I start, I was like angry, sad. I was not happy. I was depressed. I think I comment to you that I don't believe in the press until I you know, have it. And it's really bad because you even thinking about killing yourself. You care about anybody in your family and you know they love you and they care about you. And but when you like that, you, you don't care. You just wanna the end, your life and that's it. So in doing this, I feel more calm. Try to not to get so angry when things are not my way, you know? And it feels good that life don't be in like the way that you think, you know, like it's more stuff. And and you have it in you, you know, you don't have to look for another person to help you. You have to do it yourself. You can go inside of yourself and look all this beautiful. It's like art. I think it's like art that is inside you in a lot of light, a lot of life, life, you know? And it's, it's beautiful. So I'm so grateful to learn about myself and I can wait to, for the future, I hope. You see what I'm gonna be in the future and just be a better person of me, that's it. And we just, we are love, you know, we are love. And it's just beautiful. It's just beautiful. This this, how we can call it? Journey is amazing. And I hope when I'm I'm not here anymore, I can inspire more people to work on themselves. You know, because it's just beautiful. It's just beautiful.
That's awesome. I love your cat purring.
Yeah, he had to be part of this too.
Yeah.
He's talking.
And I I wanted to say, just because you mentioned the whole um idea of suicide, um I think it's important to mention that with one of the things that I love about this work is that because when you understand that we're all made out of parts, we can understand that there's a part in us that is feeling suicidal, but it's not all of us. It's like just a part. And so, for example, like, you know, we talked about protectors, like the protector, sometimes our protectors will take on this role of like feeling suicidal, because it wants to protect us from the pain that we're feeling.
Mm-hmm.
And so when we can understand that it's a protector doing that, and it's not like it's so enmeshed, like we're so enmeshed in the pain that we think it's us.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but then when you do this work, you start to pull, like give space between your parts and you, like you as the self, and you can actually help that part that is feeling that way and understand why it's feeling that way and give it the support that it needs. And that's what we did with you. We were able to identify that there was a part that was feeling that way.
Correct.
And to help it and go through the process, that similar process that we went through today. And so when that part has the support that it needs, it doesn't have to do that, like it doesn't have to continue to feel that way, and it doesn't have to like send these thoughts to your mind that you want to kill yourself or any of that stuff.
Correct.
So this is why this work is really, really valuable, because it really changes things. And I'm not a therapist, and of course, if it ever gets to a point where you know, the work we're doing feels like, you know, I think a therapist would be better, like I would be happy to tell you that. But with the work that we've done so far, like you've been able to um you've been able to work with your parts to help them. And I think it's it's been amazing to to see your growth and to see how far you've come um and to understand yourself. I remember when you first came, you you didn't really you didn't know your inner world at all, like you just felt you felt didn't feel good, and you were just having a really hard time. But there was a part in you that kept telling you to contact me, and you listened to that, and look where we are now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm so grateful for that.
I'm I'm really grateful, too.
Yeah, so uh I just can't wait for more, you know, and I see the not a new person, but the real me, you know?
Yeah, I love that.
Yeah.
You know, when you said that, like I really tapped in, like my creator archetype showed up, because that's me, like my passion in my life is to be me, like to be who I am authentically, even if it bothers other people. So when you said that, I was just like, that's a creator speaking right now.
Yeah.
I love it.
Yeah.
And then one other thing that popped up that I wanted to just share, just for fun. We worked with a part before that set told you that um it was gonna send you a signal. Um it was like green or something like that, right? And then we're like, it was one of the parts, I don't wanna go too much into it, because this is really personal, but um if it's okay, is it okay for me to share?
Yeah, yeah.
That part that was like upset, right? And we worked with it and helped to unburden him, and and then he wanted to change it, so like not to take on people's stuff, right?
Correct.
He was gonna send you the color green.
Yeah.
And then that story you told me where you were like driving and you were really mad, and all of a sudden you start, you start, you saw the color green.
Mm-hmm. And it's like, don't get mad, remember green, green, green? I'm like, oh my god.
Yeah, but it wasn't even thinking about it, it just
I was not thinking. I was just so angry because of the traffic and I was starting saying bad stuff and and then the green, 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 I'm like, holy cow! Stop, Marilu, stop! I'm like, okay. It calm. Everything is gonna be fine. It's not personal. It's not with you. It's not your problem, so stop it. So, yeah.
Yeah.
It's it's just beautiful. It's just beautiful.
I think that was like the first time that I think I realized that you started to see the connection between your inner world and the outer world, how it was like you know what I mean, like
Yeah.
like how you got to see like, oh, this stuff is real, like, because I wasn't even doing anything, and it's like, green!
Yeah, yeah.
It was amazing.
I hope more people yes, try it and see what it can change. It changed you like completely, like I still working on it, uh but I see a lot of things different. I think a little bit more. I just don't react. And um it's working. I have a lot of work to do, but I'm working on it.
We all do. I'm still, I've been doing this like therapy for a year, and I'm still doing stuff, like things are always coming up. I'm not perfect, and I don't want anybody to see me that way, because like, no, like, that's not like the idea we have a perfect is flawed. It's not real, so.
Nobody's perfect.
Yeah. Uh yeah, we gotta be honest with ourselves, so.
Yeah.
I I'm so grateful. Thank you so much for allowing me to do this demo and to have other people witness you. Um and um yeah, I'm really grateful. And just to put that out there, if you're interested in doing this work, I will put my email below so you can contact me. Um and I can share more information with you about my packages, okay? Thank you so much.